Good evening, welcome to the Board of Supervisors regular session Thursday, August 19th. Sorry about the last few minutes being late, it's six thirty, three P M. Recording device will be used during the meeting, and let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Are you doing that, let's do this?
On the night sessions.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Do we have an update for Chrissy Holland?
I don't know where he is. The gentleman that was supposed to be here.
He's not here? No? You gentlemen here for, are you here for public comment for the Holland?
No, I'm here at the respective Dowell Ford Station.
Okay, alright, we'll get to that then. Alright. Any comment?
Do we have approval of the Board of Supervisors meeting minutes from August 5th?
Any issues at all? So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we review the Treasurers' report?
Yeah, I'm fine. Make a motion to accept the Treasurers' report and authorize the payment of bills?
I will second, I will second with the exception of twenty-seven, three sixty-eight. Other than that, I'm good with everything.
Okay.
Just again for clarity of the motion, I would recommend that someone second Supervisor Scribner's motion to adopt the proposed bills as is, and then when the vote is taken, Supervisor Scribner, you're free to abstain from those check numbers that you, if you'd like for the record to note the checks you're abstaining from.
Okay. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And abstaining, obviously, from the one I just said.
Abstain, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Move on to the approval of the reports, Township Manager's report. Please, anything you need to add to that, Luke?
There is no portion of my report that requires being read orally, although I'm happy to do so.
That's fine. The Building Inspector's report will prove, can you move the screen up a little bit? The Roadmaster, Matt?
Sure. My time's allotted to three minutes, so I'll make it quick. All the equipment sold on municipal bid is paid for and picked up from the garage. Thank you to those who purchased the equipment. The Aspen Drive paving project is currently out for bid. Bidding will end, I'm sorry, August 24th at eleven A M. I will ask the Board to consider the lowest qualified bid on your next scheduled meeting, September 2nd, and letters to the residents were sent out today to advise them of the proposed work. PennDOT has announced that they will be closing a portion of Creek Road from Devera Road to Hopewell Road for base repair. This work is scheduled from Monday, August 23rd to Friday, August 27th. Please check PennDOT's website for additional information. We continue to work with Tim Towns of Southdown Homes for the dedication of the remaining portion of Hideaway Farms Development. Earlier this week, we met with Southdown's engineer and Township's engineer to discuss the footing exposure on the Patriot Lane Bridge. There's a little bit of a scour on that bridge. A plan will be developed to armor the footing to prevent additional scour. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, the East Brandywine Police Department's report?
Good evening, I hope you can hear me. I just wanted to point out two things in my report for the evening. One, the PD wants to congratulate Lieutenant Jeff Ankenich on accommodation that he received from Keystone Valley Fire Department. The lieutenant was off duty on Saturday, May 23rd, he had his family in the vehicle, and he came across a serious traffic accident in Parksburg. A vehicle had been traveling on Strasburg Road and hit a cement bridge abutment head-on and seriously injured all four occupants in the vehicle. Lieutenant Ankenich was instrumental in helping to direct the emergency personnel onto the scene. He also helped perform CPR on a young female victim who unfortunately did not make it, and he helped to triage and render emergency medical care to the other injured victims. And I just wanted to point out that they gave him accommodation about a week and a half ago, and so he should be commended for that. And then it's past Friday, August 13th, Officer Miller responded to a cardiac arrest call along with East Brandywine Fire Department Medic Bob Domenico?
Bill.
Domenico?
Bill.
Bill, oh, Bill Domenico. And they were first on the scene, and the patient was in full cardiac arrest, and they performed CPR and other medical care to her for quite some time before the other medics could get on scene, and they were very instrumental in saving her life. So we'll be issuing accommodations to both of them, but I just wanted to mention that since our next meeting won't be for a while, so. And that's probably one more point out.
Yeah. Thank you. How you doing, Chief?
Thank you. Report for East Brandywine Fire Company, just to add to the Chief's talk about the cardiac arrest, Officer Miller and EMT Domenico got there, and the key to that whole thing was is that they applied the AED that we have in service in all of the police cars, and it actually defibrillated the patient three times and got them back into a rhythm, and with good CPR between the police officers and Bill, I think the outcome was going to be rather favorable, so it was a good cooperative effort. To our report, we had fifty-three total incidents for the month, thirty-one fire, twenty-two medical, we had thirteen fire calls in East Brandywine Township, we had twelve medical calls in East Brandywine Township, we used sixty-three gallons of East Brandywine fuel, we had a total of eleven personnel per call, we had three training sessions with nineteen personnel in attendance. I am happy to say, if you have driven by the firehouse starting this week, the activity level has increased dramatically. We were able to get the concrete brick layers back, we were able to get the contractors back, they had left for another time-sensitive job, and ours was taking a little bit of a backseat to the time-sensitive job they were on, but they claim that we have everybody there now and that the project should be moving rather quickly. The inside of the place, if you stop down, has been moving along quite well, but now you'll see the cinder block gone up on the outside, so we're happy that all the contractors are back and moving.
Any impact, Joe, on the heightened level of COVID now in terms of your calls or anything, or no?
George, it's literally day-to-day right now with, we get stuff from the county, we just had three EMS calls today, COVID-related. We look for direction from the county as to what we should be doing, so hopefully we're going to be able to stave off closing down again. Oxford Fire Company canceled all of their events for the whole year and closed their station again already.
Wow.
Oxford.
Oxford.
And you've closed monthly meetings, too?
Not yet.
Not yet.
No. We have a ninety-eight, ninety-eight percent vaccination rate for all the members, so we're kind of happy with that, and we've been holding the meetings with the doors open.
Okay.
So, we'll let you know.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. The approval of the reports as read and submitted, I salute. All in favor?
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to new business, authorization for grant reimbursement request, Bonzville Mill Park improvements.
Well, we had planned on having a speaker available to make an update on that process. I'll remind the Board that at your last meeting, I made a, asked for the Board's vote on a conservation easement or to be recorded on the Bonzville Mill Park. That is done. I'm not sure what other, what other items need to be complete in order to make this request, this is a volunteer-led project, so I suggest we table this until we're able to get an update from someone who knows what's going on.
Okay. We'll go and table that then. Moving on to the Police Department's request for a part-time hire, Chief Crazy?
Yeah, good evening. So I put a little cheat sheet in front of you guys to kind of help explain this. We are, I am requesting consideration from the Board to allow us to hire a part-time officer. At the present time, we are at fifteen full-time officers and two part-time. As you're aware, in November, Sergeant Mooney is going to be retiring, that's going to drop us down to fourteen full-time and two part-time. We anticipate that sometime between the end of December and the beginning of January, one of the part-timers hopefully will be floating into the full-time position. That's going to knock us down to fifteen full-time and one part-time. So the request is to hire a new part-time officer, which would occur sometime the end of September because it's going to take us a while to go through interviews, medical testing and everything, and that is for the sole purpose of completing our minimum three month field training program. We anticipate this is going to run about thirty-two hours per week for the twelve-week period of October, November, December. Starting rate is eighteen dollars an hour for a total of about sixty-nine hundred dollars, and we're going to cover that with money that's going to be left over from Sergeant Mooney's budgeted December salary, which is approximately two thousand dollars more than what we need. So we have plenty of money to cover that. We're running right now about fifty-seven percent on our budget, and we should be around sixty-six, so we're way under budget, but this is, the purpose of this is to try to get somebody trained and get them ready so they can hit the boots running in January, and we can kind of not miss a beat here.
What's the market out there? Do you have a feel for what the market is for officers?
I can tell you that most agencies are hiring, and they're having difficulty getting applicants. Downingtown and Cale, for example, advertised, it was sometime back in May, they gave a test around June. They had four open positions in Downingtown and three opening Cale, and they did not have enough to complete background checks and whatnot, so they're retesting, I think it's next month, they're advertising right now, you can see the billboards up in the bypass, but it's, agencies are having a tough time finding candidates, and they're running about half of what they typically have in the academy classes. So we do have four candidates that we've gotten applications from, and we've kind of just generally met them, you know, when they bring their apps in, we kind of talk to them, so, you know, we'll just put the word out, collect applications, and if somebody's interested in working part-time, you know, they'll, you know, be considered.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine, you Kyle?
I have a comment on that topic.
Yeah, sure.
But it's Matt Kanepuski, 425 Creek Road, Chief, I noticed you just, you just, you know, accommodated an officer, but you actually didn't enter any of it, like, of what you did this month? You didn't say how many responding calls, I didn't think I heard that.
It's in the report.
Yeah, but you're here to read it into the report, correct?
Right, the Board has it, and if they would like me to read it, I would be more than happy to read it.
But, you know, that's the point of this whole thing, and then why do you think that there's a, why do you think there's a lack of police officers currently?
Well, there's not a lack of police, there's a lack of police officer candidates. I think it's pretty clear, Matt, from what you see in the news today, not many people want to be cops anymore.
What's, what's in the news? I don't understand that comment.
I don't think I have to sit here and explain what's in the news.
I don't, I actually don't watch television, I haven't watched television in fourteen years.
This is a very tough profession, and, you know, a lot of people, based on what's going on in this country and what's happening right now, are second guessing being police officers.
Why is that?
There's a lot of retirements, and, you know, everybody around us is hiring.
So on the news, they say there's a lot of retirements, that's the theme?
Matt, I don't need to address this question, okay?
But, what are you talking about? I'm simply getting a why, you know, there's, there's running cruisers sitting right next door. Half your personnel just sits inside and eats pizza from downtown Downingtown. I don't understand. Excuse me?
You know the hell that, you know that hell?
I'm present, I just pulled in and parked in the parking lot.
From Downingtown?
Yeah, I have it on video, I communicated it with Supervisor Winters.
Well, you can, feel free to drop those videos off to me, and I'll take a look at them.
I have my attorney contact you if you'd like. We're on this topic, Mark.
What's your, Matt, what's your public comment?
My public comment, well, I haven't heard any data from the Chief, and he doesn't seem to enter any data anymore, and everything that's apparent seems to be very conflicting to what he says regularly.
Well, here, the report's right here, if you want to.
I'd love one.
You want a copy of it?
Sure. You said we're way over budget, Chief, just because a budget's available, you feel it needs used?
I didn't say we were way over budget.
Exactly what you said.
I said we were way under budget.
You said we were way over.
That's not what I said.
So you have no, what's your justification of asking for more personnel?
We're losing personnel, though.
We're replacing.
Personnel we're losing is the reason, is what the point of the hiring is part-time, we have two part-timers now, one, we're losing a full-timer this November, and so one of the part-timers out of the two now are moving to that.
I heard that conversation, but if we don't know how many actually stops there are, and tickets, and.
Well, it's right here, it's just, we didn't want to be redundant, I mean, it's available, you know, online.
Well, sure, I'd love a copy, but this is what the meeting's about, when there's a police, you know, when he's supposed to do his update, he's supposed to read everything in that paper, so why am I asking for it?
Okay, well, your comments noted, so we'll discuss making sure that we do that in the future.
Okay, so, again, Chief, why do you think there's a shortage of police officers?
I've already answered that question, Matt.
The news, you said?
That's not what I said.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Moving on now to.
I'm sorry, was there, was there a vote on authorization to make the part-time, to initiate the part-time search?
Yes, I mean, we all, we all agree to, so do you want to make a formal motion?
I would, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Make a motion for the Police Department's request for a part-time hire.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, pardon the interruption.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the public comment on non-agenda items. Hopewell Road for the resident's update regarding concerns.
They don't seem to be here yet, they're not here yet.
They're not here yet?
They're coming.
They're coming, okay. Well, why don't we move on to the Downforge?
Alright.
How you guys doing?
How are you doing?
Good.
Good evening.
My name is EJ Siren, I'm the President of the Downforce Station Homeowners Association, and this is Chris Campagnelli, he is one of our members-at-large, and we're coming to you here for the first time as the newly-elected Board Members of Full Homeowner Association Board. Prior to this, Metropolitan was in full control of the Board. So, we've identified.
What's, I just want to check.
Yeah.
Is Metropolitan still on it, are you partial, or are you totally?
They have an ex officio member, yeah, we, we have all five board positions now.
Have all five positions now, okay.
Just as of a couple of months ago.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have identified safety as the number-one topic in our sights right now. Obviously, there are a lot of things, a lot of issues that we're dealing with between Metropolitan and D.R. Horton's and particular homeowners right now. And we have three different things we want to discuss with respect to safety tonight, and we provided this map, this is part of the map, to Luke, who has put it up on the screen here, and I do want to say, I didn't want to publicly acknowledge Luke, he's been very welcoming to us, we've had a couple Board meetings, actually, our first two, we're here at the Township building, he introduced himself, and we really appreciate that. And we look forward to working with you guys in the next year, twelve months probably, through the duration of the development from Metropolitan, D.R. Horton's, to us. So this is one of those topics that we think, you know, that now's the time to discuss it. This is the most updated plan, and then we've marked it up with respect to two things, and then the third thing is not on here, so I'm going to talk about the two things that are on here first. The first is the stop signs that we're proposing, and the second is the crosswalks, which are in yellow on this map, and again, this is just one, I would say quadrant of the map. We have. Wow.
Yeah, sorry, hot mic, yeah, just, just, it's an area mic, so if you can keep about two or three feet from it.
Can you hear me alright? It's hard for me with the mask.
Absolutely, I never know where to place it, because some people whisper, some people are quite good at public speaking.
I think that's fine. So, these are our proposals for intersections that we think should have either a four-way or a three-way stop, and they're labeled on there, either four-way or three-way. We're open to your recommendations and your guidance on this, we're not demanding that these be, you know, four-way or three-way stops in every place, but these are our thoughts on it, and same with the crosswalks. There are three blind turns in this development related to these intersections, there are two right next to each other, which is not on this particular screen at the moment, and then there's one that's at the far bottom-left corner here on this screen, which is the Township Road back entrance into the development, onto Seven Springs Lane. It's blind because there is a hill here, this development is mostly a hill, and, by the way, what we're talking about here as far as intersections are all on what we call the spine road, which is from, if we're looking from here, Township Road, the back entrance, down Seven Springs Lane, there's a right turn at that.
The upright.
Yeah, upright in a corner, onto Nichols Mill Road, the spine road continues as Nichols Mill Road, all the way down to two eighty-two. So we have a lot of through-traffic in this development right now, a lot of speeders, and I know Township Police has been made aware of that, they've been out as well, even putting a speed sensor, right, for a period of time, and we think that the only way to really slow these folks down, and again, for just general safety purposes, especially with the crosswalks, is to have these intersections, these particular intersections have stop signs, or in a couple of instances, if you guys think that, you know, having a pedestrian yield sign or some sort of crosswalk, you know, pedestrian stop, I know some of those signs they put out, if a crosswalk has a stop sign kind of sort of in it, if you think that that would be effective, that's fine, too. But, so I want to just talk about these particular areas, I think the rest are self-explanatory. But, so here, this is coming in, and it's blind because it's a hill, and it's also, there's a fence there, there's a three PVC, three-plank fence, that's very common in the development, and so if you're coming from Township Road, or if you're coming up from Seven Springs Lane and you wanted to make a right, you really can't see who's coming either direction, and I'm not sure if there is a plan to have any yellow lines painted on the spine road. If there is, it might help in this particular situation, but for right now, there's no, there are no lines on Township Road, there's no lines on Seven Springs Lane, so somebody who's coming up from that intersection in the middle of the screen there, they're flooring it because they're coming up a hill, and they can't see what's coming up in front of them, and of course, if you're coming down Township Road and you wanted to make a left, you don't know who's coming up, so there can be a tendency without street lines, you know, without the yellow lines in the middle, that these cars end up in the same lane. So it is, it is very unsafe from a driving perspective right now, and again, that could be addressed with a stop sign, perhaps that's the best way to address that one right, right now it's just a one-way, there's a stop coming from the, from Township Road, this direction from the trailer area.
There is already a stop sign there.
There's just a stop sign there, that's all there is right now. Let's talk about, let's talk about those other two blind turns. Luke, would it be possible to switch then to the part of Nichols Mill Road where Clayton Lane is on the map? Yeah, there we go, down to the bottom right. Nope.
Basically where that S curve is, right there, Luke.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's great, to show all three of those.
Yep.
So, this area you might be familiar with, if you've driven through the development, on the right side, there's a long hill, the rest is spine road, Nichols Mill Road goes down to two eighty-two. So you come up that hill, and again, it's all uphill, right, or all downhill if you're going the other direction, and cars tend to go fast because they're, you're flooring it to come up this hill, it's a very steep hill, and the first thing you do is you get, you know, you don't have any houses as you come around, and you come around a blind turn into Harner Court, which is the far-right stop sign we're proposing there, this is where the houses start, and immediately, you know, you're coming around and you can't even see who's coming at you. So we do think that there's, you know, perhaps, if, I don't know if there are other signs, street signs that can be erected on that blind turn to help, you know, alert that maybe there's a stop sign ahead, or that this is a blind turn, so people speed through here very often. So that's, that's one blind turn, and then the other is on the left side of this screen here, the two proposed stop signs we have there, that's blind in both directions, so that's coming from up the hill, we talked about the person who's driving up from two eighty-two, they're going to go right up there, if they're going down the spine road, if they were going to be through traffic, they would just continue along this road, and when they make that turn there, that's completely blind, and actually Metropolitan, I believe, has identified this, perhaps with you, Matt, and they've agreed to remove the portion of three-plank fence that's actually on that curve. Chris lives right there on the corner of Clayton Lane and Nichols Mill, and even if that, when that fence is removed, it's not, it is removed, so it's not enough to, I mean, it doesn't resolve the issue. So it's blind there, and people are coming up very fast that direction, and then coming from the other direction, you've, you've been on a road without any houses on it, and it's downhill for a while, and so the speed is also pretty high on those cars coming in that direction, and they don't see anyone coming up Nichols Mill Road right at them. So, we think that it's necessary, you know, for the traffic coming out of Clayton Lane, there are a lot of homes there, you know, with.
You've said you've been almost hit twice trying to make a left or a right turn at that intersection, that's the one on the left there.
And then, because, because of the speed of these cars, you know, and the tendency that's still going to be there for a blind turn, we thought perhaps there should be a three-way stop there in the middle. And I think part of this decision is where they should be, is the crosswalks, right? So, this is a two-hundred-and-ten dwelling development, correct? Including many townhomes, so there are a lot of people who live in this development. We are fortunate enough to have a bike path that is mostly completed, that's the darker-looking sidewalk, if you will, on the right side of that, of Nichols Mill Road there. And then on the other side, where there are the homes, there's a sidewalk. So people are constantly walking, they're walking their dogs, they're just out for walks, and they need to get to that bike path, which is always on the opposite side of the road than the sidewalk. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of pedestrians who cross this road in multiple places, and that's where we've identified these crosswalks. The other thing is that there are two totlots, playgrounds are going to be built in this development. One is going to be built just, actually, Matt, it might be, I mean, Luke, it might be good if we just moved to the left, upper-left a little bit, as we follow that blind turn.
It's right there.
There it is, it's going to be right there. And it's actually in our plan that there is supposed to be a crosswalk right where we've highlighted in yellow there. They haven't, it's interesting, it's labeled there, the reason it's gray is because everything that's gray on this plan is technically HOA-maintenanced property, it's community property. So, that is actually identified as, actually, what you put over there is crosswalk blocked it out, but that is actually gray. We don't know if Metropolitan is actually, is going to put like cobblestone in or something like that. If so, it will help, you know, because it will look like something other than the road to slow people down. We've discussed whether or not there should honestly be a stop sign there, but we think that, you know, with a crosswalk that's clearly, you know, not even pavement, but maybe it's something else that we're supposed to be maintaining, that, you know, with a pedestrian yield sign or something like that, it'll be enough. But that, you know, that's, so that's an area where there's going to be a lot of people coming down the path that way and this way to get to the playground, and they're going to, the only way that they can get to that playground is to cross right there. That's the only way. So, that's going to be, safety is going to be really important, right there. Yeah, go ahead.
If you, if you look at that portion of the map, hi, Chris Campagnelli, guys, if you look at that portion of the map, on the right side of Nichols Mills, you'll see that bike path, that black bike path. On the opposite side, there is no sidewalk.
Correct.
Even in front of those homes that are on the left side of Nichols Mills, which is across from Clayton Lane. So all of the people who need to get to the totlot will either have to walk on people's property, or, and walk on either the grass or whatever, or go across the street to walk up the bike path, to then come back across the street at the crosswalk to get to the totlot. It's very similar off of Clayton Lane also, there's only a sidewalk on that one side of Nichols Mills. So if you wanted to get to, say, our community mailboxes off of Clayton Lane, I'm on Lot 62, which is just kind of the south, I guess, the southwestern portion of Clayton. If you could go back up to Clayton, Luke, real quick.
Yeah, Luke, if you just move it to the right, you can see what he's talking about, right at that intersection.
Yeah, so right at that intersection here, all of the people who have, we have no mailboxes, we have community mailboxes, our mailboxes are on Powell, which is just off of Nichols Mills.
Oh, yeah.
So, right, so you have to come off of Clayton, on Nichols Mills, to then cross the street to get mail right there where that little hand is.
Right there, exactly, yep.
So, the, the traffic coming up the road at a quick pace...
On the blind turn, the double-blind turn.
Yeah, on the double-blind turn. And I think, Chief, your department, when they did put it out, that speed...
Sensor, yeah.
Sensor out there, I think some of the data was a little bit alarming. Some people, maybe upwards of 50-something miles an hour, from what we've, I think Ben got that information from someone, I'm not sure exactly who they got, but...
I don't remember 50 miles an hour.
Forty-seven, fifty-two, or whatever it is. I do know, I mean, listen, I live at Lot 62, like I said, and I mean, you know, we, I've been working at home ever since way before the pandemic, and I can, I can verify that nobody goes 25 miles an hour. And that's, that's for sure, definitely safety.
Are you going to refer to the email that was sent to him with all the data, or some of the data on there?
We, I mean, if Ben got an email, I don't think, I've seen an email about it.
No, he just told us about it.
Yeah, he just kind of, he verbalized.
That, that information that we gleaned from the trailer showed that if you, if you used the 85th percentile, you guys did not have a speeding problem there. So...
Well, part of that reason might be because it's a blind turn.
You mentioned cut-through, I want to address cut-through traffic. You also mentioned cut-through, okay? The total number of vehicles we were getting through there indicated to us that that is not an issue at this. We can't determine if it's an issue, because when you take the number of residents in there, you look at the number of trips per household per day, okay? You were either very close to the numbers we were getting, or slightly over, and we attributed that to the weekends, because people are trying to cut through to get to the supermarkets, to the parks and whatnot. Now, that being said, with schools going back in this session, okay, that could change, and we'd have to put it back out there. But, if you really want to feel for what's going on in there, there'd have to be an official study done by the engineer.
Yeah, well, Chief, all due respect, I mean, we're still not at full occupancy, so I'm not...
That's what I'm saying.
Right, and, and where you, or where the speed, I guess, you know...
Trailer.
Trailer was, I mean, as soon as you crested the hill on Nichols Mills, I mean, you could see it, you know what I mean? So, no self-respecting person who doesn't want to get caught speeding, who can see something a thousand yards away...
That trailer was put there at your request, at your engineer's request.
And I understand that, and we appreciated it being there, for sure.
And so, it was mainly put out there to get the count, because the biggest complaint I was getting from Mr. Wolf was that there was cut-through traffic. So we wanted to see what we were dealing with, and it just was inconclusive.
I think it's natural, though, to... Recognize that, you know, there are, there are a lot of people who live in the trailer park, I don't know the name, I'm sorry, I don't know the name of that park, behind the downtownship road, and so a lot of people do come out of there, I mean, I see them, I live actually at that back entrance, I live two houses down. I see those cars coming through, and I know they're going through, they're not visiting anyone in our development. So, I, you know, you're right, you did, it's great that you were able to track that information, you were tracking that information just coming up Nichols Road, but we, I mean, I know that that happens, and I, and I know that some of the people who are making that turn are the ones who are speeding, because I know they're cars, you know what I'm saying? So...
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not trying to argue, but I'm just, I'm telling you that people's perceptions of speed and what actually the speed is...
Yeah.
There's a vast understanding of that. So, a speed trailer is designed to slow people down, because it's a visual deterrent. So, and that's exactly what happened. We put it out there, we expected the speeds were going to be lower, and they were. We were, we were mainly looking at the count of vehicles. So again, to say it's a cut-through development, is the term we use, is inconclusive at this point. We, we honestly don't know...
Yeah, sorry, I thought I said through traffic.
Chief, I would say, I would honestly say, first, that cut-through is cut-through, I mean, you're going to get that, it's, it's a public road.
Right.
But I would say that the safety concern is the speed. I mean, I do understand that what you're saying is if you see the speed trailer, you're going to slow down, which is great, right, because it is a deterrent. But when the speed trailer leaves, the speed goes up, and that's a fact.
No, and I understand, and I gave Mr. Wolf some options that he could consider for the HOA, and whatnot, and whether that information got to you or not.
You mean like as far as speed bumps are concerned? Do you mean like speed bumps, as I was hearing?
No, no, I don't know if speed bumps would get approved, and again, everything we're talking about here, Matt, if I'm wrong, is going to be penned out, regulated, and, and whatnot. But, no, I had actually given him information regarding digital speed signs that have solar power to them, that the HOA could consider putting in in different locations as a deterrent, you know, those things, but I never heard back from him, so I don't know...
Well, that's, again, because, he was actually part of the two homeowners who were on with Metropolitan for a couple of months, so that's, I think it was, he jumped in, he wanted to get some, I think communicated with you then.
I thought you had conversations with Mr. Toole, not conversations, emails, over his concern about it, and Mr. Wolf wasn't keeping him up to speed, so I just copied him on some of the, the information that was going back and forth, and done it, just kind of keeping him up to speed on what was going on, and what the complaints were.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of things you brought up tonight that, again, I don't know without a proper engineering study whether the township's really going to be able to weigh in on this, you know, until they, they really have an understanding. And I can tell, this is my opinion, looking at all these different stop signs along that route, and you keep talking about speed, and that doesn't like using stop signs to control speed. So, if that's your direction you're going...
Well, I began by talking about the fact that there were these blind turns, right? So, I, I don't know if, I would think, I'm an attorney, I don't, I don't know this, I don't do this for a living, but I would think that, you know, having a stop sign would help with a blind turn, it's not the only thing to help the situation, but I think it would help.
There's, I mean, there's things that can be discussed, I just don't, you know, without...
There's calming devices as well, where they paint certain lines and a certain, to slow the traffic as well, but there's, there are different...
Have the roads been dedicated yet?
Yeah, we were also under the impression, the roads are not dedicated, but we were also under the impression, because that is, that road is owned by the township, and for fire and EMS, something like, like a speed bump or whatever it is, wouldn't be able to be done, because it is such a through way, in case of emergency also.
I believe it's going to be dedicated, what, in the next few months? That's the goal that Metropolitan has?
At least the spine road portion.
Yeah, the spine road portion, I'm talking about.
Um, Matt would know more about that.
Yeah, that's, that's Metropolitan's goal right now.
So, so I guess, you know, we appreciate that you guys are listening to us in these concerns. As far as, you know, moving forward with these particular things, and I said there's one other topic I'll address in a moment, but as far as these particular things are concerned, it, what is the process here? I mean, is it that we have to wait for the township to be dedicated the road?
They definitely have to be dedicated.
And then, and then after that point in time, we would come back to you with the same proposal, or...
Or do we do that study, Chief?
Or do we need to do a study? I mean, what is it?
Have you engaged, like, the HOA engaged a traffic engineer on your own?
No, I mean, again, we were, we're still, we're still new, newly-elected here, and we're just trying to do things in the most efficient way possible.
Matt, you had something to say earlier?
Yeah, if I can, if I can address a couple of things here.
Sure.
First, one of your comments was lines on the spine road, and according to the settlement, that there are supposed to be lines, W.O. lines on the spine road.
There will be double, okay.
There's two mid-block crosswalks, one of them you mentioned, there's another mid-block crosswalks. They would have to have adequate signage there for, for a crosswalk.
Okay.
Some of the other crosswalks that you're showing, one is at the two lower roadways, you have two shown there, those are not in the, in the plan from Metropolitan.
Right.
So the only crosswalk is, would be going across the stop-controlled intersections, not across Nichols Mill Road. The other thing you mentioned was the fence at Clayton. There was not enough fence posts taken down at that location. I did two marks on the roadway there. One was a 75-foot triangle, which they did remove enough fence posts for that. But the other is, there's a sight distance where you measure back from the edge of the roadway at the stop-controlled intersection, measure back 10 feet, and you should be able to see, I think it's, believe it's 127 feet down the roadway. I put a mark at that 127, and you should be able to see between those two, and I think there's still three sections of fence that need to be removed there to give you additional sight distance there. That is a blind curve coming up, and that's why you want to clear that, keep that area cleared out, so that you're able to see any vehicles that may be coming up the roadway there.
Matt, did you possibly communicate that to Horton, the, the people who eventually took that down?
I was in communication with Ben.
Okay. I didn't know about it at all. I saw Horton come out and take a couple of fence posts out, and I thought the issue was solved.
They did with the 75-foot triangle, but they did not.
Right, I had no idea that, that it needed more. So, I mean, if you communicated that to Ben, he didn't communicate that to us.
I, I did not communicate that it needed more. I was out there today and had, had looked at that.
Okay.
Because I was looking at all the crosswalks and everything within the development. One other thing that Ben had mentioned is that when you're coming off of Township Road, and you come to the orders intersection, and that's a four-way intersection currently, he said that people just roll through that intersection. Part of the reason is, is because those stop signs on Seven Springs are actually unwarranted stop signs. So, when people could go down that spine road, they will travel at a, they should travel at a safe speed going down through there. If you have additional stop signs, each time a person stops, they're like, in their mind, they got to make up time.
Right.
So they'll speed between stop signs. If you leave it where people can drive through there at a normal speed, then, you know, you're not supposed to use stop signs to control speed, etc.
I can assure you, though, that, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I think part of your email back to Ben was that people roll through at like six or seven miles an hour.
Right.
Particularly the spine road Nichols Mills coming past Clayton, that, that double curve there, it is blind going both ways. One, I mean, that triple rail fence there, trying to make a left out of Clayton, isn't so bad, even with the ones removed, but going up with some of that landscaping there, and it does kind of dip down and come back up, that double-blind curve, I can tell you that you can post 25 all you want, but the majority go, you know, 35, 40.
But the double-blind curve is also a traffic calming device. That's why they, you know, in most cases, you try and put curves into roads, which will slow people down, and that's part of a traffic calming device.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can tell you, like I said, I live right there, it might be a traffic calming device, but I would much rather somebody roll through at seven miles an hour than go by my house 40 miles an hour.
Yeah, we have, I mean, there's two real, I think there's really two crux issues here. One is that we live in a development that's extremely steep, right, in a lot of ways, okay? And this spine road is steep. And then the spine road itself is, is, has large open spaces where there are no stop signs. You know, when you come off of 282, you're coming in the development, the main entrance, you don't have a stop sign until you reach Seven Springs Lane.
Right.
All the way down.
Mm-hmm.
So, and if you're coming the other direction, the only stop sign you hit is, is that, after you turn off Township Road, you come down that hill, you're coming down a hill, then you go to that stop sign that we just talked about, and then you have a freeway, you know, all the way down past that totlot, that playground, you have a freeway. You know, so, the other thing that I think is, at the crux of this, is that we, we have a lot of active people in our development, and they want to be out and about, they walk a lot, etc., they're using this bike path, and they need to be able to cross the road. And like you said, there are crosswalks that are at the stop signs, but there are no stop signs.
And Chief, by the way...
There are no stop signs, so they're crossing, they can cross on that side of the road, right, but if like, as he's saying, he's got to go to a community mailbox that's not even on his street, right? And there are, there's an entire cul-de-sac of people who need to do that, and there's no crosswalk there, right? So that's what we're talking about, is that there are crosswalks that need to be in place, that for whatever reason, they just weren't in the plans, you know?
Yeah, there are two mid-block crosswalks, one below Clayton and one above Clayton.
I think it's, I think it's going to be best to, I'm starting to get lost a little bit.
Yeah.
I think maybe if you get your, like, bullets of what, you know, as far as your, I see the drawing where your crosswalks are on your, and your proposed stop signs, but if you can have like the explanations, like Mr. Campagnelli said, about the different, you know, things that you observe from like your lot, like from your home, like as far as like your concerns for each area of your neighborhoods, that way, you know, the township can administer it to give it to the developer and make sure that it's before the roads are dedicated, see if some of this can be...
Yeah, so I guess, that was back to my question about how we move forward. So, is it that Metropolitan should be addressing this with you, or is it that we...
We can look at the approved plans and the settlement agreement and find out exactly what their requirements are from their approval, based on what they're actually doing, and then to see if that coincides with what your concerns are, and then if you have any additional, sorry, if you have any additional, then we know we can try to get that addressed separately before the township can get it, you know, receive dedication.
So, just so I understand, if, if something wasn't in the settlement agreement, like just say, the crosswalk we're talking about, so that he can get his mail, if that's not in the settlement agreement, it's not going to be on the plan that we have, right? And at that point in time, Metropolitan would not be legally obligated to do anything with that. So, how would we effectively getting a crosswalk in that instance?
So then that would be something that HOA, that's not part of their, their approved plan, that's something that MGD has to do for Metropolitan, then HOA could, you could take that role on, you know, within your own association, but we have to make sure you get the approvals, make sure, you know, that roads are dedicated, make sure it meets all of the criteria, that's...
Nothing can transpire until these roads are dedicated, right?
But until they're dedicated, we can't really even comment, so to speak.
Okay, so the road's dedicated, Metropolitan won't be putting a crosswalk in because it's not on the plan. So then, we come to you, and we say, we'd like to have these crosswalks, we think that there should be certain things to address the blind curves, and then you would consider the options at that time? Is it, am I correct?
As long as there's enough people, as long as there's enough concern, you need to have, you know, majority of your HOA, you need to have, you know, for us to take a look in the condition, we need to have, you know, X amount of people that are need to be interested.
As long as there's enough people, as long as there's enough concern, you need to have, you know, majority of your HOA, you need to have, you know, for us to take a look in the, the condition, we need to have, you know, X amount of people that are need to be interested.
What is, what is that figure that you need?
It's, uh, it's in the township's set class card, I forget, I don't know off the top of my head, but as far as petitioning for, you know, road improvements and whatnot.
Uh, there is a, there's a pencil, there's a PennDOT traffic calming manual that, that, that recommends that before traffic calming is installed, that municipalities get the, get public opinion from the people who will be adjacent to those traffic calming devices. I think that is the record you're referring to.
Yes.
Um, i- i- may I? Uh, actually, before I speak, you'd indicated three safety issues, only two of which were shown on the map. And, and, and the two would've been stop signs and?
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks, what was the third?
I'm just about to talk about the third, yeah, but, uh, it's about streetlights, but.
About streetlights?
Yeah.
So, do you, do you mind if I speak before you address all three of, of your issues?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, first of all, it's, it's a wonderful milestone that we now have, uh, an HOA, uh, uh, that is in, uh, that is, new residents are, um, are in charge of, so.
Yeah.
Welcome to start. Um, second, I, I, I sense that we're setting up to a little bit of, of pushback, and I'll, I'll speak on, you know, the, the chief has spoken, the roadmaster has spoken. Joining us remotely is our solicitor.
Okay.
I'm also gonna speak, um, I, I don't want this to be interpreted as, as opposition to, to your ideas for keeping your community safe. But when it comes to multi-way stop signs, um, the, into, these improvements need to be warranted under a record that is, um, called the, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And, um, so, you know, this isn't a, a question of a petition, we can get a hundred people to say, I wanna, I wanna four-way stop sign here. It, it needs to be warranted by this national standard of traffic. So when the chief is referring to his traffic counts, or, um, the roadmaster is referring to his observations in the field and his experience, we're, we're comparing your request to a national standard of what warrants a certain type of traffic control. And I can tell you right now, um, uh, on, on the, the basis of just some, some PennDOT publications that I've reviewed, and I've, I've got one projected, that the use of stop signs for speed control is, is, is not authorized. So I, I just wanna, wanna start with that conversation because.
That's fine, yeah, I appreciate that.
Once dedication is complete, and once the board is considering adopting an ordinance that sets the speed limit and the stop signs, so that those traffic control devices are enforceable under law, um, they will need to be looking at a, a traffic study that indicates that those stop signs are warranted.
So Luke, I mean, who does that traffic study?
Yeah.
Township or the board?
Uh, well, the, the, it, it will, it will be, it will be the, the, I'm speaking for the board at this point.
I'm talking about the HOA board. Does the community do the traffic study, or does the township?
It would be the township's traffic engineer under normal circumstances, and that is Andy Heinrich, who would be making that recommendation. And then our township's solicitor would be preparing the ordinance to make those enforceable.
Okay. All right, well, you understand, I mean, I think it's important that we convey to you the, the gravity of the situation, that there's, cause I don't think it's, it doesn't pop out at you when you look at these plans. It doesn't really pop out to you if you're driving around there, cause you wouldn't know that, for example, his entire cul-de-sac's gotta cook, you know, two streets over to get to their mailbox, you know? So I, you know, I hope that that's helpful, and we'll be back to when it's time. Um, we weren't sure.
Really is a lot about the kids too. I mean, chief, to your point, when school's in session, we're gonna have at least five or six school buses full of kids in that development. And I mean, even right now, when the roads aren't dedicated, those kids have to walk from Creek Road all the way up the hill
All the hill.
to get where they need to be. So it's, it's a bear.
Yeah.
The speeding is definitely an issue.
All right, so, um.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let you proceed to talking about lights, but I wanna give you PennDOT's, um, technical information sheet dated spring of twenty twenty-one that describes when multi-way stops are warranted and how they are implemented.
Okay.
That just, uh, that's also available online, and that's the, the record I was referring to in my comments, so thank you.
Yeah, if we could, we'd certainly like to be aware when Andy's gonna be doing his, his survey then. Um, I guess before you guys, after dedication, before you adopt the ordinance for street signs, you're saying, um, you know, that if we could speak with him, and I think it might be helpful at that time.
Luke, is that something that happens regardless after dedication, is that Andy will be doing that study? Or is that something that we have to request of the township to do the study?
Uh, this is, um, I, actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on the support of some more veteran, uh, uh, people in, in the township. When we've taken dedication of the roads historically, um, who has prepared the resolution or the ordinance, uh, establishing speed limit and traffic control devices?
Um, I usually do that.
Okay.
I prepare that ordinance. It's ordinance eighty dash one.
Uh, Mark?
That pertains to, I'm sorry, that pertains to, uh, speed limits and also through roads and stop roads.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jonas, are you, can you hear us?
I certainly can. Good evening.
Uh, 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 so, part of what we're dealing with is new manager, new representation, uh, different composition of the board. Um, uh, Mr. Jonas, could you explain regionally how that is typically done, the establishment of traffic control devices on newly dedicated roads?
Well, I think it, it's done by recommendation by the roadmaster with the assistance of the township, uh, traffic engineer. Um, I mean, I think that would be the appropriate way to do that, and we would certainly draft or work with the roadmaster in drafting the ordinance. Um.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I, but the one, one other thing I just wanna weigh in, you have a lot of moving pieces on this. I've listened to the discussion. Um, you've got, you know, a brand-new HOA, you've got roads that are right now privately owned, you've got a, a settlement agreement. Um, and presumably, and I guess Matt can tell me differently, I don't recall in the settlement agreement whether there's any requirement or any conditions yet of, of dedication. But I think the question for the supervisors is, or the questions are, that we're hearing from the HOA that there are a number of issues relating to these roads um, and safety issues, and maybe some improvements. Uh, and if it's not directly covered by the settlement agreement, and if there's no, right now contractual obligation of the township to accept dedication, then there may be an opportunity for some discussions with the, with Metropolitan, if it remains the owner of the roads, to address some of these issues, perhaps even fund a study, um, so it's not foisted on all of the taxpayers of the township. Uh, and wrap that all up into the moment when the township's gonna accept dedication.
Yeah, Mr. Jonas, that's, that's why we were thinking that this was the time to, to bring it to your attention, you know, instead of waiting and saying, oh, sorry, it's already dedicated, Metropolitan's gone, you know?
Yeah, look, I know, and I know you're a new HOA, but I, you know, it, uh, it would not be, I don't know what your funding is, what kind of budget controls you have, but one way to sort of set the stage with this would be, and, and I think the chairman asked you the question, if you had not engaged an independent traffic engineer, you might wanna do that, and then that traffic engineer could do a preliminary study, have some conversations with the township traffic engineer in anticipation of, one, addressing these issues, and two, getting to the point when the township will consider, uh, dedication. But it would be, give you a head start if you engaged, you know, a private consultant who's savvy with the PennDOT requirements and warrants that Luke has mentioned. Um, and, and begin something preliminarily, uh, so the traffic engineer and the supervisor can have that to review.
Do you have any idea how much that generally runs? Are we talking like a thousand dollars? Are we talking like five thousand dollars, ten thousand?
One thing I'm not is the traffic engineer, so I don't quote.
Matt, do you have any, no?
No, no.
I don't quote the fees of other professionals.
I mean, we were dealt, we were given a budget where our homeowners are currently paying, as single-family homeowners, one hundred five dollars a month in HOA fees. Uh, the townhomes are paying two, two or five, and, uh, there's a lot of money going out the door and not much value, so we're trying, we're trying hard to deal with that.
Yeah, you might, you might wanna have a, you might wanna have a conversation with Metropolitan, their representatives, since they're gonna want these roads dedicated. And the township may want some of these issues resolved, uh, as a condition to accepting dedication. Um, that, you know, and then you could, if these issues are part of the road network that were constructed by Metropolitan, as, uh, again, if it's not covered by the settlement agreement, then maybe some of this should be the burden of Metropolitan to address with the HOA, so you guys don't, you know, inherit, you know, more of a burden than, than you already have.
Yeah, I, I think they're probably gonna be resistant to, you know, listening to what we have to say, or what would be lis- willing to listen to what you have to say to them, you know?
Hey, Matt, is there anything else besides the fence that is getting taken out of the plans that was agreed to be in, uh, trees, is there any? I remember.
There are some of the sewer, there are the sewer, like a little.
Remember they took out those trees and we, we were allowing them to remove the trees and not put them in in the front of the people's houses, um, uh, last year?
Two thousand eighteen, actually.
So I guess where I'm going with this is if there's things in lieu of, that they're not spending money on the street trees, and they're not spending money on the fence, and they're not spending money, that this could be used to be, um.
Leveraged.
Right.
I think a lot of the problem there too is that some of those trees were put in by Metro, and some of those trees were put in by D.R. Horton. And the fence that we're talking about, that, that Matt is talking about, was put in by D.R. Horton, the builder, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of finger pointing.
We're dealing with a lot of he said, she said, and my hand's out of the pot, and you deal with it kinda, kinda situation.
Yeah.
So I think, uh, what EJ's talking about is the resistance from possibly Metro, um, and it might carry a lot more weight if it came from the township. Uh, because quite frankly, I mean, just trying to get an answer out of, uh, out of either one of them is.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't an aesthetic request. This is not an aesthetic request, this is a safety request, so we thought that it would be best to bring it to the township's attention. Um, to, to have that kind of influence, uh, on Metropolitan, you know, if it's, as Mr. Jonas has said, this might be the time. Um, so the.
Anything else on the ASBIL plan that's not, that's not, besides those street trees and the fences that you can think of?
Um, nothing that I'm aware of, but Panoni is working with, uh, Metropolitan.
I mean, that might just be a, a simple email to Panoni to ask him if anything has been cut out of the ASBIL plan that was approved, um, that would have some monetary value for.
Luke, do you know if there's an updated punch list from Panoni? Cause I think the most recent one that we've seen that's on file with you is like October twenty twenty.
Uh, I'm not aware of a more recent record than that, and I'd also indicate that that punch list that Panoni prepared was for the purposes of an accelerated dedication that is not occurring.
Okay.
So they limited their commentary to things within the right-of-way. That wasn't a comprehensive punch list for the development.
Is that something that Metro has to go back to Panoni and get a comprehensive list, or is that something that the township requires of Panoni?
Um, it, I don't, this is not something we're talking about, uh, is a requirement. The, 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 the developer has financial security for the construction of public improvements
Right.
on record with the township.
Right.
And periodically, as they complete those improvements, they ask for escrow releases, so that that financial security is released.
Even before dedication.
So, yeah, so the punch list process is not a, is not a, is nothing in code. It's just part of the communication between a township and a developer as we proceed towards noting that those improvements are complete.
Yeah, so this could be part of the punch list, if the township determines it to be a safety issue.
Well, the, 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 yeah, so the, the punch list is, is a comparison between the recorded plans.
Okay.
The, 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 the financial security documents and what is on site. So, so what, what, what Panoni prepares when they prepare a punch list is they compare those records, financial security and recorded plan. Um, an additional mid-block safe pedestrian crossing that isn't shown in the settlement agreement, the recorded plans, or financial security would, would not be added to a punch list.
One of the questions we had, uh, because we're having, there's just so many complaints and things that we're dealing with, um, with respect to developer or builder, um, from homeowners, is whether the township has, uh, flexibility, authority, discretion to, um, require certain things before the financial security is released that aren't on the plan. But, you know, you know, as they've been constructed, as we look at it, as things are reconsidered in real time, you know, hey, you know, it makes sense for a safety reason, for example, or, or other reasons to, to address that. Is that, is that kind of authority and discretion there with the township, with respect to releasing the financial security? Or is it simply, hey, look, Metropolitan, you gotta do exactly what's on the plans, and when that's done, it's done?
I'd say there's room for negotiations, but the township can't push an issue to the point of a legal repercussion. In other words, we can't force them to do something that wasn't on the plans.
Right.
Obviously, if there was things that we can negotiate with, um, I would consider safety a high priority.
All right, so then let's go into the last point, because that, that's a good segue. So there are no streetlights on this plan, period. There apparently, we've seen a very early iteration of this plan, perhaps from Southdown Homes in two thousand and six or whatever it was, where there were some streetlights on the spine road. Uh, but that is many, many iterations ago, and there haven't been any on there for a while. So we are concerned, when I say we, it's the board speaking on behalf of the Association of Members of Homeowners, um, that there, that this is a very dark development at night. I mean, there's no requirement for anybody to put their lights on, uh, on their porch or in front of their garage. And there are no lights around these community mailboxes, and there are no lights at these intersections that we've been talking about.
Or at the entrances.
Or at the entrances, which has been another huge topic, uh, just recently for homeowners. Um, that there's no light on, on any, there's no light on the sign at the main entrance, there is no sign, uh, or light at the other entrance. Um, so what is it, you know, we don't really fully understand why a plan like this would be, have been approved without any, any streetlights on at least the main road. Um, so I, I assume there was some reasoning behind that, and I'm not sure if that's even within your can right now as to why that occurred. But if we don't know the reasoning, we don't know the reasoning. The bottom line is, it's a safety issue to not have any lights in the development. And, um, at the bare minimum, we propose that there are lights at these main intersections. And we also think there should be some sort of light, uh, at these community mailboxes, which, which there's probably, I don't know, eight?
I can see one.
Six or eight, yeah.
There's six or eight.
And part of that obviously is electricity, you know, there has to be something laid there, and to our knowledge, there is nothing laid, um, down. So, um, as we were just talking about with respect to the punch list and releasing Metropolitan, uh, we propose that, that this be considered as something that for a safety reason needs to be a part of the plan, that they need to be involved in. I think it might be even prohibitively expensive for the homeowners association to be able to ins- install the necessary electrical equipment and lights for that. And we understand that, you know, uh, you have to pay for lights then, uh, when they're up, you have to pay for electricity. Um, I understand there might be some township funding for that to some degree, um, so we're, we're certainly open to that part of it. But, uh, our request at this point is, is that there be streetlights.
Remind me again, do you guys have lampposts?
No, we don't have anything. There's nothing.
No streetlights in, no streetlight, that seems weird.
We'd have to take a look at approval, that just seems kinda odd to not have streetlights.
Does it, doesn't it? I mean?
Why don't I recall years ago that they were talking about this, and they were suggesting they were gonna put in lampposts, that's why I asked that question.
I, I have no recollection of an earlier iteration of the plan with, well, I, it, it, not, without belaboring the point, the, the, the approved plan for the estates at Dalen Forge was a settlement agreement. But most developments built in East Brandywine Township, all that I can think of in fact, do not have street lighting. And that is, that is an intentional decision, um, that is, that's envisioned in our subdivision and land development, keeping with the rural character of East Brandywine Township and controlling, uh, light trespass. So, it, it's, it's hard to read into, in design intent when you're talking about a settlement agreement, but I think by and large, our code doesn't envision urban street lighting.
Do those communities you're talking about have community mailboxes or mailboxes at each home?
If community, like, uh.
It varies. We just used Apple Cross as an example. It, it has some neighborhood mailboxes.
That's a private community though, they pay for their own.
Well, as is, as is the majority of.
No, their roads are, their roads are.
No, just the spine road is a public road, the rest of the roads are private.
But you do have to cross the spine road, most people to get your mail, you know, I mean, that's, it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
Right. Well, I, if I, I believe it, it is, no streetlights are currently anticipated on either the roads to be dedicated or the roads that will remain in the possession of the HOA.
Right.
Um, my point with this is that if we were starting. My point with this is that if we were starting from scratch, and a developer came in with a development with streetlights, it's entirely possible they would get pushback on that from our planning commission. So, that's just, I'm laying that out there.
So there are no streetlights in Applecross, is that right?
There are, but the association pays for those lights. So they, they update them to LED, they pay the bills for them, they.
Was the infrastructure in the plans?
Yes, but again, it's a private community, so the.
None of the roads are dedicated.
Right. The entire development, they don't pay, they pay taxes, but they have to plow their own streets, yeah.
Right, right.
But, but in the plans, was the infrastructure for the lights, correct?
Yeah, it had been.
Which we have none of that.
They're on the, yeah, they're on the plan.
Again, I mean, EJ's point, don't know why that would have, would have or wouldn't have been approved, which is even put the infrastructure.
Well, I think Luke explained what must be the reason, and I think, I mean, I get that, I respect that, and in a lot of these offshoots from Hopewell Road and stuff, those small neighborhoods, I totally get that. This is a 210 dwelling neighborhood with townhomes, there are a lot of people, and it just, it's not a royal community, you know, so I don't, I get what you're saying, Luke, and that's, I'm sure that's probably what was in somebody's mind in 2006 or whatever it was. It's just, it's not practical. I mean, we're talking about the next 100 years here, and we're never going to have a streetlight in the development. I mean, it's not even, we can't, we're not going to be able to fund the infrastructure for this, right? We can't put, even on the spine road, we can't lay down the conduits that are necessary to do it. So, you know, at the bare minimum, that has to be done if we're ever going to have streetlights, right? So, again, it was a planning decision, I totally understand that, and I don't know what the process is, but that is our proposal, and that is why we're proposing, I think it's a reasonable proposal. If we need to be the ones who maintain the streetlights that are at the mailboxes, that's one thing, I get that they're on private roads, but on the spine road, I mean, I don't know, I don't know why we can't have at least some streetlights. I'll leave it at that, I mean, you know what my point is, so.
Want to just take, yeah, want to take a look, because I know this, this project was before, I think, at least my time, Luke's time.
The only other thing I wanted to point out is, putting streetlights in after the fact is difficult, because you end up getting the cascade of light, and people complain about, well, I want the lights, but I don't want them in front of my house, and then you run.
I want light, but I don't want light in my bedroom.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so we, so I know that in other neighborhoods, that are private communities, that the residents were actually disposing the light bulbs themselves, so that, you know.
We are fully aware that you are not going to please 100% of people 100% of the time. That is a fact, but in that 80/20 rule that you've talked about earlier, if we can get 75 to 80% of the people satisfied, I mean, this is.
And there's the safety concerns.
My recommendation would be, put down, obviously, like you just said, we can't solve every problem, but if you put down your strong wants and wishes in an email form, you know, to send it to Luke and the supervisors, at least when that negotiation is going down for the, for the carryover for the township, we have, you know, what you guys talk, now granted, it's in my head, it's in their heads, but it's better to have it on paper, just so we can read through it when we're going through this with the escrow.
Yeah, so that, you're saying that we would have a bullet point list, but then also to identify on a map where we would suggest?
Yeah, because I can tell you, supervisor winners, I was looking at some of these stop signs that you were saying, and some of them was going four houses, stop sign, seven houses, stop sign.
That was just a start.
No, no, I know, I know.
I know it's ridiculous, I know it's like a connect the dots ridiculous.
No, no, we were just saying, we're like, gosh, you know, people are going to go four houses and then stop, and then seven houses and stop. So, but I agree with you, that there are some areas where if.
If unique spine road.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, now, I was going to say, the other suggestion we're going to have is, because they keep bringing up Applecross, Applecross has low voltage lights that they put in after the fact that they're entrances, they were 110, and they converted them over to low voltage, 12 volt. Those lights, I can tell you, run for an entrance about maybe $1,500 to $2,000 for an entrance, and then they're LED bulbs, so they're running, you know, an average of 10 watts per bulb, so very little carryover cost. If I had to guess, it might be for an entrance, $30 a month.
You're saying for the sign, or are you saying?
For the signs, for the signs, if you guys are talking.
You still have to get that, you still have to get that infrastructure from somewhere, right?
Correct, you still have to get, you get a 110 line run in there, but then it plugs in, it downgrades to 12 volt.
Right, but I mean, like, on the spine road at 282, or like 282 in Nichols, I mean, what are we going to do, run an extension cord?
From across the street.
We don't have any electric run to the bottom of it.
No, there's nothing. I mean, not that we're aware, I don't think it's on the plans either, but, yeah. Okay, so that's our job, is to get back to you then with a bullet point list of our, of our strong wants, and a map where we would propose that there at least be some streetlights for safety purposes.
Yep, and that way would give us a chance, you know, Luke, if we can get us like the settlement agreement in the board and Matt, some agreement, and then the last, you know, recorded plans, and that way we could take a look at two and be able to speak intelligently if we need to look at it.
Okay, so then we'll include on that list then, where we, in the map, where we propose some crosswalks that are not there. And then, as far as the stop signs, do you want us to propose any, or is that something that's really not?
I think, I mean, really, Matt, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea to propose them, to where, to at least know where you want them, and then that'll start the process, you know.
All right, we'll do that.
I was saying, well, maybe not here, or maybe here, or, and you're saying, not being happy.
I think my confusion is, is upon dedication, is the township going to do that study off the bat, or do we have to request that, or do we need our own private study? Like, I think that's kind of where the gray area is, at least for me. Because it sounds like if the, if we're in there, roads get dedicated, no problem, speed limits go up, nothing's proposed, no study's done, but is the township automatically going to do that study, or is that something we have to request? The traffic study?
Normally, when there's a new development, see, I would imagine during the planning commission, that the Andrew Heinrich probably looked at these plans along with the, I mean, I don't get involved in the land development aspect of it, so I would imagine he looks at the plans during the land development part. I'm looking at you for, I mean.
Well, there's also the potential, we talked about, about, you know, addressing this before the dedication, so.
Well, why don't we do this? Well, Mark, our solicitor, is on the phone, so why don't we ask him to look in his forest, provide us the correct answer according to the NPC and the local guidelines, and then we'll get that over to you. You know, I think Luke, if someone has your email.
Yeah, but then we'll have this in direct communication with Luke.
Because I don't want, I don't want to guess and tell you the wrong.
Yeah, sure.
I would say that, that in the big picture, timeline is dictated by the developer. It's the developer who makes requests for escrow releases, it's the developer who makes an offer of dedication to the board. So when you're talking about what happens, it's a little harder question, but I can tell you when things happen is when the board make, when the, when the developer makes those requests.
I do know from conversations with Mike Tulio that Metro is pushing, I think, Matt, you can verify, they are pushing to try to get at least a portion of the neighborhood dedicated by the end of the year.
Yeah, I think this is a school bus situation, I think that was part of the requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot, a lot, a lot of work to do, especially with that basin that's kind of wide open right now, but, yeah.
They have a lot of work, you know, the other, the other residents we're here, we're supposed to be here to talk about, you know, some stormwater runoff and smells.
Heard about that, yeah.
They have a lot, that, from the, from the report that was given, with the violations, they do have a plan of action, so they are working on it, it says, but we're still waiting for a schedule from the developer, so.
All right, guys, well, thanks so much for your time.
Appreciate your time, yeah, really do.
And we look forward to working with you.
You as well.
Thank you, nice meeting you. Is there any other public comment on non-agent items?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.